We're going to get started. We've asked Donnie Emerson, the pastor at Russell Springs Christian Church, if he would lead us in prayer tonight. Donnie, we use you a lot. We appreciate you. And then if you wouldn't care to remain standing and Dave Blakey's going to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we are just honored to be here at this meeting tonight. We're very proud of our city and we know, Lord, that you had a hand in developing this city and that you had a hand in putting every official who is in this room here tonight. And God, we ask that you give us your divine guidance and wisdom, that you help us to do the things that will please you most and will benefit our city and our county. God bless every soul who is here in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the Russell Springs regulars, city council meeting order. First thing we got, Chris, me or Rocco, we've got a call.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Daniel? Mr. Blakey?
Here.
Mayor, your motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. Sherri was here and she's sick, so she left to go to urgent care. So the next thing is acceptance of the minutes. Chris has sent them out. And I hope you've had a chance to look over the minutes. Are there any distractions or additions to the minutes?
Make a motion to accept minutes.
Taken.
The next thing is the...
Ms. Mann? Need to lead against motion. Second, need roll call? Need a vote?
Yes.
Ms. Mann, vote yes now.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mayor, motion carries.
I gotta hurry there, Lisa. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
And just to let you all know, this is Lisa's first meeting back. Glad to have her. Appreciate you for serving. And then now we'll move on to the acceptance of the cash, the disbursements, and financial statements. Like so, you had them in your pocket. I hope you had a chance to look over them. Are there any questions on the bills? God, I need a motion to pass bills.
Make motion to pay bills.
Motion, Chris.
Second.
Second, taking roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries, man.
Okay, the next thing is old business. I don't know if we have anything on old business. Does any of council have anything on old business they'd like to break up at this time? If not, we'll move into the new business. And the first thing on agenda is Sheriff Post cannot put you on top. Sheriff, we're going to have Kevin's kids and some video and stuff so I can know if you wanted to stay or be over the podium, yours, if you want it, sir.
Hi, Chris. Before I start, I kind of broke myself a little no here and retyped today. But before I start, I sometimes, I want everyone to know that I sometimes feel like a middleman sometimes. You know what I'm saying? When I try to bring everybody together on this issue. But whatever happens on this important issue, I'm going to be able to say I did all I could do as a sheriff of this county and if something ever did happen on this issue. But I want to thank the mayor and the city council and everyone here tonight who gave me the opportunity to address extremely important position, which I feel is school resource officer for Russell Springs Elementary School and Salem Elementary School. Everyone knows here, as do the citizens of this county, how important it is to have school resource officers in our schools, especially with all the school shootings going on. I campaigned on protecting our children in all of our schools to the best of my ability when I took over as sheriff. We started immediately having office staff to work and apply for grants to see if we could get any help from the federal government. By the grace of God, a little over three years ago, after applying for a grant, the school resource officer, we were awarded that grant with the ability to hire a total of two officers. And looking back, I actually wish I would have, you know, applied for more because if we got it, I really wasn't expecting to get it to start off with. But the good Lord blessed this county, this office, and the school board by awarding this grant to us for at least three years. When I took over as sheriff, I was going to all three elementary schools myself and checking doors to make sure they were all secure before I went on into my office in the morning. And would check periodically throughout the day to make sure our children were protected. This was the best I could do at the time before we got the grant to protect our children because we couldn't sustain any SRO salary to keep two officers in our schools and still provide services to this county. But now, unfortunately, this time is near where this grant ends on the June 30th, 2023. I wanted to make sure we all do what we can to keep resource officers in all of our schools. We have a request to an extension due to the late COVID start of most schools that happened in 2020. But we haven't heard back and I honestly don't expect to. But to be able to keep school resource officers in place at Russell Springs Elementary School itself, it will cost $46,800. And of course, that same amount would go for Salem Elementary School as well as bringing the total to $93,600. But by Russell Springs School being in the limits of Russell Springs, only half that would affect you all directly. The county attorney reached out to me Tuesday morning after the meeting of the fiscal court, why I'd also brought it up, to set up and facilitate a meeting between both mayors, representatives from the city, the county judge, magistrates, and the superintendent and board members of Board of Education to figure out a way to move forward in keeping officers in place. I advised him, go ahead and set up this meeting. I know the fiscal court, school board, and the city of Russell Springs right now is splitting the cost and helping with one of your SROs at the high school. Since 2018, the fiscal court itself has paid $61,250 to help keep him up there. The fiscal court, Board of Education, the city of Jamestown, and the sheriff's office started in 2021 and has paid part of the SRO program as well as Jamestown Elementary School. But without grants to help keep officers there, Russell County Sheriff's Office cannot sustain any amount to keep officers in these schools. And I informed Chief Carnes on Monday morning that we would not be able to sustain our portion of the salary for the SRO at Jamestown as without grants, any money that we could get would have to go towards Salem Elementary School, SRO, since it was so far out of the city limits. Should something happen or occur, it takes so long to get there. That is why right now, I'm coming to all parties involved early to try and solve this problem before the start of the 23-24 school year. We as elected leaders of our communities have to do everything we can to protect our children and the schools when this is in session. Because it's not a matter of when it's going to happen here. It is a matter of when it's going to happen. And we all need to be prepared by doing everything we can to prevent such tragedy from happening here in Russell County. Thank you all for the time that you all give me to speak. But you know, it is my wish is that, you know, we all discuss ways to keep our kids protected in the school system. And you know, with all the school shootings going on, you know, we had a shooting in Louisville the other day, bank shooting. Every time you hear something going on, it's bad. And it's going to happen in this county. I don't know when, and I hope and pray it never does. And I'm telling you all, it will happen. Thank you all.
So, Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Do you know, is the school board providing any kind of funding for these officers? Since they're providing service at the school?
Well, right now, we're going to meet with the school board Monday. And you know, they've been good to help out with Jamie's in particular too. So, you know, but we've all tried to help out and provide. I know the, I talked to some of the magistrates, the county judge and stuff. Everybody thinks that, I guess it needs to kind of fall back on the school board.
The biggest tax collector in the county.
To be able to do that, you know what I'm saying? But ultimately, I'm just trying to get everybody together. It's early, you know, we've got a few months left. You know, if we don't get no extension, it ends June 30th.
Yeah.
I mean, that's it. And you know, if we don't get somebody back in place, I'm going to have to go back. Just like I said, do it like I used to before. You know, I was going around the schools in the morning before I went to office and checked. You know, if we can't figure out some plan together to keep them in place, I'm going to go back to doing that. That's my own recourse. And you know, I did it before. I'll do it again, you know, as long as I'm sheriff. I'm going to do what I can to protect these kids. And like I said, you know. And of course, help is hard to find. You all are aware of that. You know, if you've got school resource officers that want to either stay in the schools or be there for another year, you know, my philosophy is we need to try to keep them. Because you know, it's hard to put, I know I said, we've got, you know, some, one younger officer that's up there, but like I said, it's hard to get majority of the time to get young officers or deputies that wants to stay in the school system because they like to be in the know. You know, they're not like retired officers. You can't just, you know, retired officers are two and four at a time. You know, they're not coming out. I hope and pray that we get some to apply for a job, which I'm sure the chief over there is the same way. It just don't happen, you know? And I just think that if they're already two in place, you know, whether they, you know, work on the sheriff's department, the city, I don't care. But you know, we need to figure out a way to fund these guys. That's basically the ultimate thing.
How many do you have now, Derek?
Right now, with this grant, of course, we have two, one at Russell Springs Elementary School and one at Salem Elementary School. That is actually under the grant. Clayton Magnage is at the high school, which technically under you all. His arrest powers are whatsoever. And then you've got Jamie Rogers down at Jamestown Elementary School. Of course, Troy Young and Jackie Greider falls under school because they are technically employed by the schools.
Wouldn't it be a, so you're worried about Russell Springs and Salem, correct?
Yes, mainly, you know. Like I said, even though Russell Springs is in the limits itself, mayor, it's still, you know, if you left here at the PD, it's going to take you five, roughly five minutes to get there. You know, going to Salem, it's going to take you 12, 13 minutes from Jamestown, driving like a maniac to get there if you don't get somebody killed trying to get there.
My suggestion would be, since Jamie is paid by the city of Jamestown and he's at Jamestown Elementary School, for Russell Springs, his officer to be at the Russell Springs Elementary School. That would be my suggestion because we're paying him and then I'm having to pay another officer to do traffic. So really, I'm paying two officers to do when we could move our officer from the high school because you've got two already there.
Got you.
And they were there forever. And I could move my officer to Russell Springs and that would just leave Salem. We'd have it, we'd have it pretty well took care of. Does that sound like a suggestion to you?
That sounds like a good suggestion to me. You know, I have no problem with it. You know, I know it's whatever you all wanted to do and, you know.
But it seems like if we're going to pay him, we should have a word of where he's going to be, you know, as far as.
Couldn't Jackie, can Jackie and Troy, can they handle high school, middle school?
Well, they have so far, you know. Before reading other resource officers, they was having to kind of go around from school to school, you know, just check periodically if something happened to you, you know.
So actually, Clayton wouldn't have to be there maybe.
Well, of course. I don't want to speak for everybody, you know what I'm saying? Because I'm not the school board itself, but like I said, you know, you know. But like I said, you know, ultimately, if you got officers, whether it be in the schools or whatever, if we can keep them employed, that'd be the best overall thing. Because if they're already trained and we sure don't need to lose anybody, you know.
Chief, I think we keep Clayton at Russell Springs is good. Maybe we could move him to the next school.
Sounds like a good suggestion.
Maybe y'all couldn't get together, like you said, your attorney said, and figure out something for Salem.
Well, I said, you know, like I said, the county attorney's willing to, you know, sit down and talk to everybody involved and, you know, try to get a free time to do it or whatever, maybe next week or something. You know, at least get some of you all, maybe everybody sit down in the room and try to figure out something. Because, you know, it's already April. May and June, you know, it's right around the corner. We start the school year back in no time, you know? So I just want to make sure that we all do as much as we can do and take these kids there. Figure out how to pay for it.
Who is your grant through, Derek?
It's the justice grant or whatever. I mean, you know, it's, you know.
Is it a state or federal?
It's federal. And Chris applied for grants. He knows, you know how much trouble it is to ever get a grant to start off with. And then it's just, you know, just a lot of paperwork goes in it. He knows that, and it's just, I hate that it's coming down to this, but we all knew, the good Lord said, the good Lord's blessed us by getting it, you know, for three years. It saved everybody a bunch of money. And I just want to see somebody at each of these schools as possible, you know.
Are the officers that's employed by other sources, the school board and the cities, paid at the same rate as the ones from the grant?
I do not know. It may not be because, as I said, there you go back to trying to keep officers. I'm sure it's not because our two officers in particular works the road during the sun for us. You know what I'm saying? So that's part of the grant having written up and they come and actually work for us. So it's kind of hard to justify when somebody's willing to work the department for a couple of months while school's out and others ain't to keep them on the same page, type of thing, you know?
So you can't reapply for that at all?
Well, she's applied for an extension for those few months there with COVID. You know, we had a late start in 2020. But now, like I said, we've not heard of none and I don't expect. And if we did, it'd only be for three months and ultimately, it would then end in October of 2023. So it'd be only for three months there.
Should I be okay?
Sounds like we might.
If I go lead, I would want a couple of councilmen. Really, you should, Rob, if you care, go. Another COVID, because I just need to, I need the voice of the city there.
When you going?
Whenever they make a meeting.
What day would be easiest for you all to try to meet? You know, you all, I know you all are busy too, jobs and everything too, you know? And I can pass that along to county attorney too, let him kind of know. I'm going to meet, like I said, ultimately, the school board Monday night and I'm going to go to Jamestown as well following Thursday night.
Anytime. You'll have to wait till next week because Jamestown, he's going to meet with them next week. So just get back with us and I'll, I'll get a couple to go to.
Appreciate your all's time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, chief or sheriff.
I've been there too.
We're getting ready to watch video. We've got Kevin.
I'm mad again.
Don't pull that back, you know, whatever.
See you.
Thank you.
I've got a soccer game. I've got to go to the stadium.
We got Kevin Williams' event is coming up and he couldn't be here tonight, but he did want to send a video to us.
Hello, mayor and members of the Russell Springs City Council. Kevin Williams here. Glad to be with you by way of video. I wish I could be there in person. I always love when we get to do that and when we can have some chats, but my schedule's a little bit crazy these days. So I will be there in person very soon to say thank you and get to answer questions and do all that. I love that. But thanks for this opportunity to give you a little update tonight by way of video. I love promoting my hometown. You know, I make a home in Nashville, but it's never been my hometown and will be. You're looking at it right here. I grew up on Hales Highway, just about a mile from where we sit tonight. And before that, I lived on Sullivan Street for a couple of years over. But my backyard backed up to the parkway there. And we watched them build the parkway in about '72, I guess. So fond memories for me. Graduated Russell County High School and began a career in music. And of course, all the studios, all that stuff were in Nashville and so that's kind of what took me here. I had a lot of help along the way. And I know members of this council were there for me when I needed you. I had neighbors. I had church family and I had two hardworking parents in the home. I was really blessed. Now, kids today don't have a lot of what I have. And none of us grew up with a silver spoon here, okay? We know what it is to struggle and scrap and get along. So I think you identify with me and I just want to be there for kids like I was, like we were in some way. The culture is so different today because it's very isolated, polarized in a sense. And we don't know the needs that are right around us a lot of the time. We don't even know the names of the kids down the street sometimes. So it is different than it was in 1970s. Okay, so I said, let's get a little pot of money. Let's see what we can do with this. We met with some members of the business community around here, some pastors. We had the media there. We had the people from the education department there. And we just devised a little plan and said, what if we do this at a grassroots level? Just some concerned Russell Countyans there for the kids to say, we've got your back, right? And we're not buying shoes for everybody, coats for everybody. It's not that. It's not like a state-run program. What if we, if this kid needs shoes, let's provide shoes for him. And if this one, she needs a coat, let's get her a coat. And let's see if we can get in their lives and do something productive that says, we've got you covered. You matter to us. You're important. And we expect something from you. We expect you to grow up and be a responsible, productive citizen, right? That's what we're trying to create here. Get in their mind with ideas and first, be able to get in there with some help. And some of that help takes money. So I brought money in 2014. A lot of you folks all donated here. The community came together, businesses. I remember the Chamber of Commerce said, we're going to do with our door prizes. We're going to give you the money from what we've spent for door prizes. It was just amazing. Everybody, people were doing pinto bean suppers and all kinds of things to raise money, car washes. Churches got on board. And it was truly something I don't believe could happen anywhere else other than in Russell County, Kentucky. Well, the evidence is we have a nine-year track record of helping children and getting in their lives and molding them and doing what's positive and right for them. And to my knowledge, out of 120 counties in the state of Kentucky, we are the only ones that has anything like this. It's a beautiful thing that blesses me. I remember seeing the community come together after the tornadoes in the 70s and rebuild. And nobody had to tell them to do that. That's just what a community does. And that's what happened here. So the first year, we over-doubled our goal, came in and it's increased every year. And the city council and this city has been such an amazing part of that every year. So from my heart to you, thank you. And we think this year is going to be even bigger. Seems like all the businesses are on board. And I got to speak to a 10-county child abuse conference at Lindsey Wilson about two weeks ago. And it was an amazing time. Got to talk with a lot of educational personnel, social service personnel who work with kids on a daily basis. And they're all saying, how do you do this? What happens in your town? What is this all about? I get to say, hey, it's a bunch of caring people that love kids and can embrace the idea of empowering the next generation. Because folks, we're not going to be here all the time. At some point, we're going to take a break. Some point, we're going to drift out of the picture and somebody's going to take our place. And we've got to equip them today for that. You've always been on board, so I'm not going to ask you for money. I know you'll always do the right thing. You've proven that. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Russell County, and thank you to this wonderful council for supporting what I believe is going to produce all of the teachers and leaders, business leaders, pastors, attorneys, doctors, you name it. I think there's going to be a crop of those from Russell County, Kentucky that are going to rise up and be the leaders in our state for the next 20 years. People are going to say, what are they doing over there? And we're going to talk about this. So God bless you for all your help. The concert is going to be April 15th. Don't think of it as tax day. That's going to be the following Monday, I think. But Saturday, April 15th at 6:00 PM, Russell Springs First Baptist Church. They've been so kind to host us every year and grateful for them. The doors will open at 5:00. Concert at 6:00. I've got special guests with me. Matthew Holt from the Gaeter Tour, Michael Shade Rousey from the Gaeter Tour is going to be here. I've got a special guest that I can't announce tonight. It's a surprise, but we'll announce it in a few days. We're just trying to work all the details out so we do it right. You're going to love it. You're going to want to be there. My guitar teacher, Larry Beasley, is going to be there. And Larry wasn't able to be with us last year, so the whole community's looking forward to seeing him. And a gospel quartet here in Dear My Heart, the Crossroads Quartet, with 63 years of music ministry is going to be there. We're going to have a community choir. We're going to have kids singing. It's going to be an amazing night and I want you to join me. You can make checks payable to Kevin's kids or to the Russell Springs First Baptist Church, whatever you desire. It's all going to go in the same pot of money and be dispersed after that. And you can get your check to anybody involved with the cause. Anybody here on the council knows what to do, so they can get you fixed up. And let me make this note. All the money stays in Russell County, okay? Never leaves the county and is used for needs in the county. It is a protected fund that's held at the state, at the Board of Education here in the county. But it's not operated by the state and it's not to be used for any other reasons other than what is set up by these resource managers that we have at every school, okay? So in other words, if they want to pay the light bill with it, they can't. That's the way it's set up. And I love that. Only in Russell County. So thank God and thank you for your effort. If you need me, everybody knows how to get hold of me. Please contact me if you've got any questions. And if you want to help with this, we'd love to put you to work, okay? God bless you and thanks for this time. Bye-bye.
So the concert is Friday night, 6 o'clock Saturday night. Any council that wants to go, they're welcome. I'm going to go.
Be in my backyard. Be in my backyard.
Yeah, I'm a goin', so anybody who wants to go, just let me know and we'll make a donation like we always do. The next thing on the agenda is acceptance of the fire department state audit. Chris, if you want to read that?
Yesterday, the fire department, Kentucky Fire Commission, and they do an annual audit every year. They'll go over the financials of the department. They go over equipment, things of that nature. Yesterday, they did receive a clean audit and I've got a one-page summary in everyone's packet of what the Kentucky Fire Commission sent down. In the past, we've never really accepted it, but the fire department, I'm talking that that might be. Again, I did just accept it into the minutes that they did receive a clean audit for the year. So with that, any questions? I'll try to answer it the best I can. I know that the fire chief was going to try to be here and something came up today. I believe they had fire a little bit earlier or something.
Got any questions? It's not. I need a motion.
I thought you said the state audit.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Thanks, council. The next thing is the, the council change for Cooper Row, R2 to R3. Chris, you want to read that? Tom, you want to read that?
I'm going to read it. Go on. I got to say, this is interesting to be on this side of the council. But thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for letting me be your new zoning administrator. Got some big shoes to fill for Mr. Coffee back there. And Coffee, jump in if I'm looking. And Coffey, jump in if I make a mistake here.
You do agree.
But as of April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five P.M., we had a zoning board meeting. All members were present, and they discussed the changing of Mr. Elwood Mann's property from R2 to R3. You all have the map numbers and stuff down there. Do I need to read those? I don't do that. No. It's a fourteen-acre plot. It's for the extension of a travel trailer campground that is already there. The board voted on it favorably, and it passed. So we just bring it to you guys for ratification. Thank you.
Stay there. Are they going to ask you questions?
Oh, okay, that's true.
They got any questions, Tommy? So did any of the neighbors have any objections?
Uh, no, not really. There was one that made an objection about the traffic on Cooper Drive.
But would it have access on Cooper or would it be off 127?
Just 127 is what the zoning board made me suggest. And if they do this for the entrance and exit only, for the campers out on 127. So that wasn't a problem, and that seemed to satisfy.
Is that across from the radio station?
Uh, no, it's right there behind.
Where the city line?
It's right there at the city limit line. It's kind of like across the road, kind of corner from RECC. It's right behind the auto mechanic shop there.
Cars?
Right there.
Cars and little one.
Right across from James Town Auto.
Yes, James Town Auto, because that's the one I was trying to think of.
Best church.
Yeah, that is a church.
You got any questions? If none, I would need a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Thank you, is that?
Second.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Blaken.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Tommy. You've done a good job in the first round.
Well, thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is the Resolution twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-four. It's a city road list. Chris, you want to read that? And I think you all should have a list in your packet of each road in the city.
This was a resolution that we've been working with the Lake Cumberland Area Development District to go over all the roads and make sure that they have the accurate mileage on each road and if they are assigned a C.S. number. And we just have to adopt that as a council. That's the first step in order to stay compliant for our municipal road aid that we receive from the state every year. It says, City of Russell Springs, Russell Springs City Council Resolution twenty-two thousand three hundred and zero four. Whereas the Russell Springs City Council agrees the following roads on the attached appendix A are part of the city road system. Whereas the City of Russell Springs maintains these roads, now therefore be resolved by the Russell Springs City Council agrees that the listed roads are part of this city road system. Done this thirteenth day of April. It says, motion by, second by, with blank members voting in the firm and those voting against it, signed by Mayor Eddie Thomas and test by Christopher Ramsey, city clerk. And you should have, we have the road list and its three pages on the attachment.
You got any questions about the road? I need a motion to pass.
Cody, my hell, maybe. I was just wanting to look them over real good. No, I don't know. What was that? What's this? Need to pause. No, we're good. Make a motion to accept it.
Motion, Cody, you need a second.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Blaken.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Now that we've set roads, the next thing on the agenda is twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four, Municipal Road Aid Agreement Resolution. Except for many from the state, Chris, do you want to read that?
Uh, yeah. The municipal road aid agreement, I'll just summarize it because it's eight pages. This is the one that we get every year. This is an agreement between the City of Russell Springs and the College of Kentucky. This year, starting July one, going to the next year, we will receive fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents in the current year. And also, it sets out the dispersments, how it will be sent down from the state. They do withhold three percent for emergency funding. And that's if we have a bridge go out roadway that is deemed an emergency by the state. We can tap into that money. If not, then we're shifting in that balance for the next year. And it is for Mayor Tom Trump, Senate, Senate, Commissioner of Rural Roads, and their things that they do attach a resolution that I have to read with the agreement. Resolutions Incorporated City of Russell Springs. Resolution adopting and approving the execution of municipal road aid program contract between the Incorporated City and the College of Kentucky. Transportation Cabinet Department's ruling municipal road aid for the fiscal year, which begins July one and will end at this year, as provided the Kentucky resides statutes in accepting all streets represented to therein as being streets which are part of the Incorporated City, be resolved by the legislative body of the Incorporated City that the legislative body of the Incorporated City does hereby accept all streets referenced to in said contract as being city streets which are part of the Incorporated City. And the legislative body of the Incorporated City does hereby ratify, adopt all statements, representations, warranties, covenants, and agreements contained in the contract and does hereby accept said contract. And by such acceptance agrees to all the terms and conditions therein stated and the chief executive officer of the city Incorporated City is hereby authorized and directed to sign said contract as set forth on behalf of the legislative body and the city clerk of Russell Springs is hereby authorized and directed to certify thereto the vote taken on said resolution. And the results being the followings. It says, College of Kentucky Incorporated City of Russell Springs. And it says, I, Christopher Ramsey, city clerk of Russell Springs, certified that the report going is a true copy of the booked ordinance given under the hand seal of this office on this day of, actually, let's say, two thousand and twenty-three, and I've got two thousand and twenty-two on there. So I'll need to correct that, that one. And that is the resolution to accept the municipal road aid money. For this speaker.
Anybody got any questions? No, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept that money.
Thank you, David. Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Blaken.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. The next thing is Resolution twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-five. That is the sale of city property.
Ready to read, Mayor?
Yeah.
Resolution number twenty-two thousand three hundred and zero five. Resolution to approve the sale of, quote, the Merle property to the Russell County Industrial Development Authority. Whereas the City of Russell Springs owns the property known as, quote, the Merle property at fourteen point three three acres, map number zero three three dash sixty dash zero one dash zero one six dot zero one located by Airport Road. And whereas the Russell County Industrial Development Authority has expressed interest in purchasing the Merle property for the sum of two hundred thousand dollars. And whereas the City of Russell Springs has determined to sell the Merle property to the Russell County Industrial Development Authority is in its best interest of the city. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. Section one, the state, the sale of the Merle property located off Airport Road to the Russell County Industrial Development Authority with the sum two hundred thousand dollars is hereby approved. Section two, proceeds from the sale of the Merle property shall be used to pay off the loan at First National Bank and any remaining amounts shall be deposited in the general fund account. Section three, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute any and all documents necessary for the sale of the Merle property to the Russell County Industrial Development Authority. Section four, the resolution shall be effective immediately upon adoption, passed and approved by the City Council of the City of Russell Springs this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three, signed. Eddie Thomas, Mayor, test, Christopher Ramsey, city clerk.
Any questions, counsel? You're not, and you're motion to sell the property to the Russell County IDA.
So, do you have a question? Yeah. What are we selling it for? What are they going to do with it?
I have no idea.
Fourteen thousand acre fair price.
Y'all gave me the, a couple months ago, y'all gave me the authorization to.
I'm just kidding. I'm just making conversation. Motions.
I wish I had a bunch to sell for that price.
Me too.
So I need a motion.
I motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blaken.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. The next thing on the agenda is the State of the City address. And I'll just read that like we did the last three years. Dear residents of the Russell Springs, I am pleased to deliver this year's State of the City address, which highlights the progress we have made over the past year in various areas. Firstly, I am happy to report that the financial outlook for the city is strong. And we recently received a clean audit, thanks to the hard work of Chris and staff at the city. Our Water and Sewer Department has continued to grow, and we have a well-organized department, thanks to the leadership of Terry Russ and his team. I want to take this opportunity to thank Terry for his dedication to our city over the years and wishing him all the best in his retirement, which Allen McCurry will be taking over, and we look forward to working with Allen. Fire Department has been adding more volunteers and providing and mentoring to better serve the community. We are proud of the achievements and compliments, phase one and phase two of the Fire Department building addition this year. Our Fire Department responded to approximately three hundred and thirty calls or assistance in two thousand and twenty-two. A huge thank you to Chief Bobby Johnson and his command staff taking such pride in serving our city and moving the department forward. Our Police Department continues to serve the community to the best of their ability, and we welcome three new officers this year, which we are confident that they will serve our city well for years to come. Park Department offered, Parks Department offered Christmas lights in the park last year, which was a huge success. We plan to build on that success in the coming years. And I want to thank all the staff who have coordinated and made it a success. Economic development has been a priority for our city, and I am pleased to report that our economic development director, Jeremy Coffey, has hit the ground running. We've had several good announcements in the past year, and we expect more to come. I want to thank Mr. Coffey for his hard work and dedication to City of Russell Springs. Finally, we added a veteran section to the Russell Springs City Cemetery and instituted our Veterans' Vanners Program this year. I want our veterans in Russell Springs to know that we truly appreciate and respect everything that you have done for us. Brian Stevens has done an excellent job overseeing these projects, and we're extremely proud of the work that he has done. In conclusion, I want to thank our city council, city employees for their hard work and dedication to our community. I'm proud of the progress we have made in the past year, and I am excited to continue working with all of you and to make Russell Springs even a better place to live, work, and play in the future. Thank you. So that's the State of the City for this year. The next thing on the agenda is, I have Allen McCurry added. Allen is our new Works Director over at Water and Sewer. And he's going to do a good job. We've been, he's been trained well by Terry, and we've been planning on this for a year or so. The last six months, he's been working with us inside, and I don't feel like we're going to miss a beat. He does a good job, and I think he's going to do a really good job, and I appreciate him. Would you like to say anything, Allen? He's, I've got two back there sitting together. You couldn't get nothing out of him for nothing. The next thing is Jeremy. You got an economic development report for us?
The only thing I have that I'd like to share is Mayor Thomas and I attended another construction meeting with Mr. Whitaker, and they need planning on, things are actually running ahead of schedule. They're anticipating trying to open around August first is the tentative date. That's their target date. I don't know if they're going to hit it, but they're going to do their best, they said. So we'll see what happens.
So that's hardy's?
And that's hardy's.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But we're getting some aggress and aggress with the state right now. So things are progressing.
Next thing is a pledge report. Chief, there.
For the month of March, there was two DUI arrests for alcohol. There was one drug arrest of intoxication. There was five warrants served, a hundred and four traffic stops, fifty-five charges cited. We worked twenty-five accidents, traffic accidents, eight speeding tickets, twenty-eight murders, assists, four alarms, and two cases opened, also thirty-three alcohol inspections. Big.
Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
Anybody got any questions? If none, before we get to Mayor's report, the council got anything? Anybody? Anything? If not, we'll move on. The next thing is, just to let you all know, Chief has announced his retirement effective July thirty-first. And we're going to miss you, Chief. Tommy, give me two to three years. You give me about two years and a few months, so.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Stay tuned. We'll be having some things for him, sending him out, so. We're going to have a dinner he's providing state. But no, we're going to have some things for him. We appreciate him. And on that note, as of, he's got some vacation time and sick time. So as of May twentieth, the man with many words will be as interim police chief, so Brian. And he's worked with him, same thing. He's been over and worked with us in here, and I don't think we're going to, he's going to have big shoes to fill, but it's, we've been working together, so I think the trends, it'll be good. It's going to be good, and everything's going to be good. We just got to keep positive, keep working hard. Then the next thing is to let you know Tommy ordered the new playground equipment last week. It's to be scheduled to put up over in the park in the middle of July, weather permitting. So we'll have some new playground equipment over there. We're working on the playground equipment. We got now, we're trying to get it straightened up a little bit too to have a better playground for, and the age groups, two to twelve, what we ordered, so. I think that'll be good. And then the next thing is anybody that wants to attend, I'll be attending the DAV Chapter Fifteen Grand Opening at one Saturday. The reopening, the old VFW, and the DAV's done a bunch of work, and we donated some stuff to them, so it's a, if you want to go, just show up up there. I'm going to go, and they've asked some of the council to come if you would. If you ain't, I know David always goes to the veteran stuff. I always shows up, so if you want to show up, one o'clock on Saturday. And then Saturday night, don't forget Kevin's kids, at six o'clock later that night, so. Got a big day Saturday if y'all want to get involved. But I'll, like God, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, David. Need a second?
Take it.